Call to order the September twenty-sixth Foxfire Village Monthly Work Session. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Morgan. Any changes to our agenda?
Yes, I have like one, two, three, four, five comments, so you guys know what's going on here.
So they're quick?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, we'll add that to item number one. Quick comments from Morgan. And I just want to bring the P and Z, I want to do, change the LUP to number two.
Yeah.
And then P and Z can be number three.
Okay.
So can I have a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
Motion to accept as changed, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, so real quick, just want to let you all know that the park trails are done. The cement has been done, they look fabulous. If you ever get a chance, please go down and take a walk. They had the bathrooms painted, men's and women's. The graffiti that was in the men's is now gone. And they painted the doors entering into it also, looks very nice.
Yeah, and I just want to make one comment on the graffiti, and that is that I've kind of instituted a zero tolerance on graffiti. So anytime it occurs, it's going to be fixed, it's not going to be at the expense of taxpayers sadly. But we will not be allowing that in this village, no matter where it is, whether it's in bathrooms or
Streets.
Streets, buildings, whatever.
Yeah, because it does cost the taxpayers money to have this all fixed.
But we shouldn't have to be dealing with that.
No.
Or looking at it.
Right. Corner of Ty Road and Hoffman, I did get ahold of the owner of the property. And he was very accommodating, he sent out one of his guys, took him four weeks, but he did it. So that corner of Hoffman and Ty Road, if you've been down that way, you can absolutely see oncoming traffic now. And he also took care of the bamboo on that other road. I do suggest if anybody has any other areas that are of concern, send in a reported concern, call me, call the village, and I'll take a look at it and see what we can do. Typically, if it's trees, bushes, whatever on someone's property, we would rather have the property owner take care of it since it is their property and not at the expense of the village. Okay, so that and, oh Hoffman, one of the items that after we met with Sarah Foster from the Department of Transportation, sent a letter to David Willett regarding the passing zone past Pinelands Preserve. Did receive a letter back from him, it said, "Our office has received and evaluated your request for eliminating the passing zone on Hoffman Road South at Foxfire Village and found no basis upon which to change the existing passing zones. Passing zones are established following federal guidelines to provide consistency across the state and for the safety for all motorists. Passing zones in question were reviewed in the field by the supervisor responsible for determining their location and were found to be correct. Thank you for taking the time to bring this concern, blah blah blah." I've called the man four times, left messages because I would like him to explain to me when the passing zones were, the passing zone was reviewed in the field, because I didn't see anybody out there. So I'd like that answered, and I'd like to know what was the criteria that was used to make the determination that it was safe. So hopefully, I'll get a call back from the man. But like I said, I've left him four messages and still waiting. Alright, that's all I had, unless anybody else has any questions?
You okay?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the land use plan. I believe we left off on maintain and enhance a strong sense of community.
Can I ask a couple administrative questions first? This really should be changed to twenty twenty-four land use plan, shouldn't it?
Oh yes, we talked about that.
We, yeah.
And I'm thinking we need to add the other board members under planning and zoning. Because we've got five, not three.
Yes.
Definitely.
Okay, that's a good point.
And then I went ahead, the changes that we made last time, I went ahead and incorporated them, I sent it out, I hope, I sent it last night, I don't know if you saw it or not.
I saw it, but I didn't print it.
Okay.
Now, did you change like the dates on the inside, like in the background? Where they started, the first thing is in twenty sixteen?
Yeah, and then I said this, the LUP is updated every four years, because really that's what we're doing. And I just put the revised twenty twenty-four LUP continues with the following emphasis, so we just kind of cleaned that up. I have the acreage for the village, Lisa managed to get it from Rachel at GIS. The Foxfire Incorporated Village, Incorporated Village acreage is four thousand five hundred and forty-five.
What was that under?
It's on like the third page, it's one dot three.
One dot three, okay.
And then
It's four, forty-five what?
Four thousand five hundred and forty-five acres.
Forty-five.
Okay, and then in the ETJ, it is six thousand one hundred and thirty-five. And what I'm thinking is that in the Sweeney property, which is about fifteen hundred, when this was first done, I wonder if maybe somehow that got included in the ETJ. Because that would push us to that seventy-five hundred mark, and that's the only, there's no other way for me to get there if you look at the available property. So I'll get those changes in there, even if my keyboard doesn't work.
Okay.
Okay. What else did I do? Lisa also told me, I mean if you so I'll update that land supply and demand analysis in chapter four with those same numbers from the county. And then the population, Lisa said she got some, it only shows us that one thousand four hundred and forty-four.
That's unofficial, yeah.
Which kind of blows me away.
Yeah.
So I'll change that too, and that was based on something, September twenty twenty-three.
Yes, so it's one thousand four
One thousand four hundred and forty-four.
Forty-four.
Yeah. So I got the feeling that probably now chapter four is going to need to be reworked a little bit.
Right.
So, and I also took, just before you, at the end of four point one, the last piece of residential multifamily we had was changed for the well, so we don't have any RN left, and so I just took that off.
Okay.
Alright, I think that's it.
Alright, so I think that's the page we left off, oh no, we left off, I think on the next, we went through, I think four point two.
We left off at, yes.
We're on objectives.
Yes, as detailed in preceding chapters of this plan, that's where we left off, goals and objectives.
Question, wait a minute.
Number, chapter five.
Still in four point two, we were going to find out whether in the last one, point number three, on the well, whether we could require a developer to fund a water source, or they should. That was the last thing we talked about, whether it's whether we can say the village, additionally, any new large-scale development within the village will require a developer-funded water source? Or do we want to leave it should require a developer-funded water source?
I think we should leave it will, because right now
It was should when we started.
Right, I know, but right now, if someone came to us with a large, a large-scale development, we would deny it.
Based on that.
So I think it should, to not be misleading, it should say will require a developer-funded water source.
Well, remember Warren disagreed about whether we could say will, and I thought we were going to have
Did he check into that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I don't either.
Okay.
I think, I think you can say, we don't have, we know we don't have the water infrastructure for a large-scale
I agree.
department, so, or a large-scale development without some other funding or some other water source.
We don't have it, yeah.
Whether they drill a well on their property or infeed it into our system, whatever it is, I think that, it's just like the Stonehill Pines, you know, we wouldn't be able to accept anything like that.
Alright, alright, so yes, we're on chapter five.
Okay, so our objectives here.
Yep.
Promote and preserve trees and natural open spaces during development, can't argue with that.
Chapter five, where are you?
We're on the next page, it's basically
I don't see your trees.
I don't see the trees either, that's why I'm asking.
Really?
Yeah, here.
Goals and objectives, as detailed in preceding chapters of this plan?
I do, I don't have what, who's reading? Are you missing a page?
Maybe I am missing a page. What's the, wait, where?
Chapter five.
See, this is chapter six.
Yeah, I don't go back one page.
Yeah, one of mine doesn't have chapter five, this, this one I printed, the new one does.
This is going, this is going
This is what I have, chapter five.
And then I can turn it over, and here's what I got.
Here.
Number one, you go to number four, I can sort it.
Can we just flip my
You're missing a page.
You know what?
You're missing a page.
I'm sorry. This one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Got it?
Okay, yes, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so, as detailed in the preceding chapters, Foxfire Village has natural and economic resources that provide defining characteristics of the village. Of primary importance to residents is preserving these resources while supporting wise growth. Following goals and objectives. So, to maintain and enhance a strong sense of community, objective, maintain Foxfire's unique character, small village atmosphere, promote Foxfire Village positive image as a desirable, desirable community in which to live, encourage and promote a successful golf environment and Foxfire Village's reputation as a golf community. Preserve open spaces. I don't, do we have anything we want to add to that? I can't disagree with any of that, and I obviously want to continue it.
Can I jump up to the first paragraph though?
Yeah.
Sorry to be nitpicky, but the following goals and objectives for guiding future growth were developed based on comments from the CAC review. There, we did a CAC, the very first time we redid this was twenty sixteen, and we had a citizen, we had some participation meetings, but we've not done that since, so we probably ought to take that out.
Okay.
Don't you think, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take it out.
The whole sentence?
Yeah, I would just put the following goals and objectives for guiding future growth.
Yeah.
You could just take the whole thing.
Yeah.
You want to take the whole thing?
Sure.
Alright. Oh, this is a drag, doing this with a pen, yikes.
Oh my god, you can do it.
Okay, so goal two is to preserve and maintain Foxfire Village's attractive visual appearance. Encourage and maintain landscaping of public spaces including major thoroughfares, gateways, and entryways into Foxfire Village. Encourage attractive boulevard medians and street landscaping. Provide appropriate buffers as transitions between land uses. Encourage development of horse trails in equestrian areas as appropriate. I don't think we should have that in there, because any horse trails in equestrian areas aren't by the owners, not at the village.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, I guess we could word that. We do encourage that, but that's for the property owners themselves, so I guess we just want to take that out, or do we want to?
Take it out.
Take it out?
Yeah.
Promote strong agricultural, I'm sorry, architectural appearance and landscaping standards for development. I guess where we can, that's the whole thing, is that we can only, yeah, we can't do anything, you know. The only thing I wanted to add to that was landscaping standards I wanted to put in for recreational, commercial, and residential development. Because I think we really need to promote strong appearances in our recreational and our commercial districts as well.
Yeah, but the residential, you know, we don't have much say about architectural.
No, we don't have any say, we don't have any say.
Exactly.
But we do have, we have landscaping standards.
Yeah.
And we have, you know, setback standards and things like that. As well as, you know, outbuildings, so to an extent, we do control what we can, what we're allowed, and maybe we can
Why don't you just put for development in all zoning districts?
We could. You want to change it to that?
Well, residential.
Recreational, recreational, and residential.
That pretty much covers them all, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And I think we need to do some work in that area, but, and the other one is to enforce and maintain sign controls. Well, we do have
We've got a science.
Yeah.
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 So can we get rid of that, or do we want to leave that in?
I would leave it in.
Okay.
Every now and then you get a rush where people, you know, want to paste their garage sale signs on the street signs, which we've asked them not to do and stuff like that.
Okay.
What does provide appropriate buffers as transitions between land uses mean, because we don't own the property?
Maybe ETJ is probably the best we can
But, but we don't
Yeah, you're right.
We don't provide, we don't provide buffers between anything, because we've got to own the property in order to provide a buffer.
Yeah, you're right. Well, the only, yeah, the only thing I can think of is providing setbacks between residential and equestrian, or residential and recreation, you know, that kind of stuff, maybe, is the only way I think that could be interpreted.
Maybe the word buffers makes me think, you got to plant tree, you know, you're putting in a buffer.
Or maintaining a buffer, like, don't, you know, don't cut down all the trees, or just like
We can't, we can't tell people not to cut down the trees though.
No, we can put setbacks in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we could encourage appropriate buffers as transitions. Or, yeah, the only thing I can think of is
I would say what we can do is what you just said, provide appropriate setbacks as transitions between land uses.
That's, that's good.
Yeah. I wish I could write on my screen.
You ready to move on?
Move on.
Okay, goal three, which is preserve Foxfire's environmental resources. Promote and preserve trees and natural open spaces during development. We can only do that to the extent that the state allows us to do that.
Right, let's not leave that in here.
So do we want to leave it in?
Yes.
Yeah, just leave it in.
Leave it in?
Yeah.
Preserve and maintain Foxfire Village's water quality and resources by protecting natural stream corridors and watersheds. I don't like that.
That's government, sure.
Well, no, because we're, we're charged with enforcing the watershed.
Okay.
We'll leave it in.
I'd like to add a comment to it, and I'd still like to see this in our building permit process. Encourage water conservation through drought-tolerant landscaping and promote zero scape.
Well, I would add that as a goal.
That's right in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to add that.
How do you want to say it?
Encourage water conservation through drought-tolerant landscaping and promote zero scape landscaping, I guess that would be drought tolerant and perhaps zero scape landscaping? Or whatever the right terminology is. You have to craft that a little bit better, but And then the last thing on here is mitigate the adverse impacts of noise and air pollution. Well, the only thing we can do is by allowing certain businesses to operate in the village that I can think of as far as noise pollution and air pollution, I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Other than, you know, our allowable uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That seems like we should just, I'd like to cross that off, kind of.
Take it out.
Unless you guys
Take it out.
Take it out, the whole thing out.
Okay, moving on, manage, are you ready, Mary? I know you're writing, so.
Damn, computer.
So now we're on to goal number four. Manage Foxfire Village's growth and development to maintain and enhance Foxfire's Village's quality of life. Objectives. Place compatible land uses next to each other.
Do we do that?
Promote unobtrusive building height, mass, and scale with respect to surrounding development and tree canopy.
Yeah, and we have, we have building heights, I mean, we have restrictions on building heights.
So just leave that?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think that whole goal thing, I kind of like that one.
Ensure and ensure the preservation and enhancement of adequate open space and recreational amenities, we do that. Concentrate non-residential development in the village center. And it says avoid commercial strip-type development, I think we should prohibit. I think we should prohibit commercial strip-type developments.
Sort of.
In planes, huh?
Well, we don't, it depends on how, it kind of depends upon how you define strip. I mean, if somebody took one of our VBD properties and put four connected storefronts and they were well-done, you wouldn't consider that a strip.
Why not?
Well, if it looked really good, I don't, you've got to be careful about that, I mean, I don't think you could tell somebody who's got acreage, hey, you can't build a building and divide it into different storefronts.
Well, I think, I think what the intent of this is, is to not have a McDonald's across the street.
Well, right, but that, yeah, exactly. But you can't, you can't say, I don't think you can do that to somebody, can you say, and I don't think we get a McDonald's anyway, but I don't think you can say to a business owner, you can't have a franchise.
But you can dictate how it looks.
Yes, well
You can, you can say, because I've seen, well, I've seen it in other towns
Yeah, you should be able to, yeah.
Where, I'm sorry, you can't have big golden arches lit up all night, you have to have a little sign, you know.
Well, there are towns like in Illinois specifically say, you can have a McDonald's, but we don't want to know it's a McDonald's.
Yeah. Maybe we need to work on that wording, but I think we should
I don't know, I mean, remember, everything they do has to come through planning and zoning, and has to come through the council for approval.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're going to lose leverage if we leave it the way it is.
True, right.
The word prohibit is pretty strong, I mean, if somebody, if somebody came to you with a well-done project, I don't
And you want it.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll say avoid.
Yeah, avoid kind of says, hey, don't, you know, don't cross your Dollar General in here, nothing wrong with Dollar General, but I know what I mean.
We've got to, we've got to remember that this is, this is at least, we can use this document as an argument as to why we do or do not change our zoning, or why we do change our zoning.
I think avoid probably is a good word.
Okay.
Well, it's already there.
That's right. We're going to leave it.
Okay.
No change. Goal five is to provide adequate, high-quality, and well-maintained public service amenities and facilities. And the objectives is proactively plan with more county for high-quality, well-maintained schools, particularly regarding the impact of development upon the school system. I don't know why that's there, because
We have no control over that.
We don't have schools and
And the county wouldn't take any input from us on school safety.
Yeah, I think we, I don't
Okay, delete?
Yeah. Develop a community center, additional parks, open spaces, and greenways to adequately serve Foxfire's existing and growing population. I don't think, I don't think additional parks at this point in time is what we need, I think we have a large piece of property that is fairly undeveloped.
Oh, you mean the park?
Yes.
Our park, yes.
We have a park that I think, if anything, we would want to improve upon the park that we have, instead of
Additional parks.
Because
Take that out.
I, I, I just think we need to
Well, number one, we don't own any property for additional parks.
Right, right, I think we should improve, we should use
We say enhance.
Yes.
Enhance, where do you want that word?
Enhance parks.
Enhance
Enhance park.
Enhance Fox, what do we call the park, Janet?
But Village Green.
There we go.
And that's what I'm doing, and I constantly get slapped on the hand.
Enhance the Village Green Park.
That's what I'm saying, we spent money on those trails and they look great.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, there's a lot of property there that could be used for numerous things.
Absolutely.
Open spaces and greenways to adequately serve Foxfire's existing and growing population.
What's considered a greenway?
I think just something that's not built upon and the tree, you know, trees, it's basically
Where's our greenways?
The park.
Okay, alright.
I mean
Alright, but wouldn't that fall under the park anyway?
It, it depends what you do with it, I think, you know, when you think of a greenway, I think of, you know, maybe walking trails.
Open spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's about all we got.
Yeah, okay.
So do we want to leave it?
I don't, I don't understand why it's there.
Okay, so, just get rid of greenway?
Yeah.
Well, you can get rid of greenway, but if you get rid of greenway, you might need to get rid of open spaces, because the only open spaces we have
Is the park.
Is the park, well, you have pickleball courts, you have the pool area, so I mean
So leave open spaces?
Open spaces and greenways, just leave it.
Oh, you want to leave greenway?
Sure.
And I might change Foxfire's existing and growing population to adequately serve Foxfire Village residents.
I agree.
Yeah.
Maintain and improve high-level public safety and emergency services.
Now we're doing that.
Expand and maintain Foxfire's utility infrastructure to adequately serve future growth and development, we do that.
We're doing that.
Continue to pursue the long-term objective of connecting the village water system to a larger water system, assuring adequate water for the future.
We're doing that.
Well, can I say something about that?
Yeah.
The word pursue, I mean, and I may be the only person who thinks like this, but we get more county water in here too fast, all of our reasons for saying no to development are gone, they're gone.
Oh, I agree.
So I don't know that I would say pursue, pursue is like, hey, let's go after it.
Looking at it.
Yeah, I, maybe
Consideration?
Well, let me ask this, I mean, if, let's say we find a place for another well, we're bringing one on that now is supposed to F-50, we find a place for another well, the longer we hold out, and I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just saying, the minute we get more county water, you're not going to say no to any development, what are you going to stand on? And right now, maintaining our own water system gives us leverage. So I just, I think pursue is kind of a strong word, I would rather see us pursue additional wells within the village than pursue, because county water will get here right when it's supposed to get here.
It's true. And, and, and hopefully, it's the county that's going to put it in, not Foxfire going to get it.
Exactly, you want the county to pay for it.
Right.
So pursuing it makes it sound like, we're going to pay for it, and I don't want to pay for it.
Right, because it's a long way, and there's a lot of county in between us and, and the water.
A lot of bill, yeah.
We knew, we do need to pursue the long-term objective We knew, we do need to pursue the long-term objective of, um, you know, seeking additional well sites and stuff like that. Like, that just, that makes, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I just don't know how to word it.
I would say continue to pursue, like you said, additional well sites.
Yeah.
Pursue additional well sites. Assuring and having a future.
Assure the water for the future?
Yes.
And the light bulb goes on for a minute.
I know. Let's finish the sentence. It took us that long to read the sentence is what it, what it did.
Took me longer to write it.
Hurry up.
Hey, stop it. Okay, got it.
Okay, item six is goal support balanced appropriate economic development. Ensure high-quality community supporting businesses, community-supporting businesses to locate or expand in Foxfire Village. And that's really, I think, the key to a successful business in, a business district. And that kinda answers the commercial strip-type development, because we want community-supporting businesses, small businesses, you know.
Right.
Locally owned. Maintain a reasonable tax rate that's attractive to existing business and residential community. Promote the balanced growth of residential, non-residential land uses with respect to the economic vitality of the community and contrib- and contribution to the tax base.
Yes.
It's all common sense.
Yep.
Item seven, promote and sustain progressive and positive planning process for Foxfire Village. The first item here, I don't like the word equitably.
Yeah, no kidding.
I, I'm sorry, but.
That, well, you know, that word today has a little different connotation than it did when it was written, I'll be honest, I mean, yeah.
Cause there's no formula for ec- for equitable.
No.
Equitably disperse the costs for expansion and maintenance of Foxfire Village's infrastructure. I don't, I'm not sure I understand what that even means.
So it wasn't.
They want everybody to share equality.
Well, I think what it, what it meant was that when we go to expand infrastructure, it, however we cost it out, needs to be fair.
Equitably.
Most, and mostly, we would, most of the time, unless you did a special assessment for something.
Which I don't think we can do.
No.
I don't know, it's pretty, it's reasonably limited. There are, I mean, there are things you can do it for. You'd have to get an attorney's read on whether we could or not. Um, but, most of that is done through our tax rate.
Correct.
Right? I mean.
I think we should cross this off.
Let's ditch it.
All right, let's not spend any more time on that.
Effectively manage long-term growth through comprehensive and proactive planning process. That's pretty.
We do that already.
Yeah.
I think that needs to stay in there though.
Actively participate in regional planning efforts. We're doing that. Support effective zoning, land use, development regulations, and enforcement.
Doing that.
Okay, so that's, do we have anything we wanna add to that? Positive planning process for the Foxfire Village.
Fight the state legislatures attempt to take away the ETJ, I guess that's probably not appropriate, huh?
But we are doing that. Implement strategies that positively address Foxfire Village's development. Maintain Foxfire Village's large lot, single-family residential focus.
Yep. Oh, I see one that's gotta go.
Yeah, maintain, me too. Maintain and protect residential property values. Encourage development of low-density, single-family.
No, go on.
And duplex housing. I don't think we want to encourage in appropriate zoning areas.
Well, we don't have any zoning areas for it anyway.
Right.
So I think we should take that out.
Well, I did. I crossed it off. I'm sorry.
I'm striking, I'm striking it.
Okay.
Encourage development of, and again, the next one, the townhouses and patio homes, I think we should take that out.
Go on.
Well, wait a minute. If you had a development, and I'll use Sacman's property down Foxfire Road, that hundred and fifteen acres, if they came to us with something that was like horse farms along the road, large RS-40s, and some patio homes in the back, I, well, I guess you're right though, we don't need to encourage it. But that would be, I mean, that would be a reasonably decent development.
It's still not, see, the way I look at it.
We might have to encourage it though.
The way I look at it is, that's zoned equestrian, which is six-acre minimums.
Six acre minimum, but.
But we shouldn't be changing zoning. It's kind of misleading to the people who have built homes across the street, to people who have built homes, you know, who, who have purchased homes in the area, because they say, oh, it's, you know, equestrian, you know, and now all of a sudden you're changing it to a pub.
Patio homes.
Right, and patio, that's, to me, that's misleading, and I'd rather strike that.
Well, yeah, we don't need to have the word encouraged, I mean, yeah.
So we'll just take this last item out.
Okay, so we're taking out, we're keeping item number one, keep an item number two, ditch in three and four.
Yep.
All right.
Wait.
Yes.
Wait, say it again, you're.
Keeping number one, maintain Foxfire Village's large lot, single family.
Oh, yes, yes.
One and two stay, three and four get the boot.
Yes.
Well, you don't wanna encourage development of low-density, single-family homes?
Well.
That's what we are.
Well, we, we can't, we took out the duplex housing.
We're just taking on the, we're just taking.
Take it out the duplex.
Oh, you know what? Because we've already said that we want the large lots, single families, so we're, we're just getting that out of there.
Yeah, it's kinda repetitive. So we're just taking that from four bullet points to two.
Yes. Okay, chapter six, and we only have a couple more pages left, thank God. Plan concepts and land use definitions. This chapter explains the depth and defines each of the land use designations used in the LUP map. It sets out the concepts behind the function and mixing of uses, and provides general criteria for locating these land use elements. The plan falls into three ma- major categories, the village center, residential elements, which is very low, low, and medium-density residential, parks, greenways, recreation, and open spaces. Okay, the LUP for Foxfire Village is aimed at managing environmental resources, protecting scarce resources, using land efficiently, and creating a distinct community. Okay, village center. Definition for the village center. It says the village center contains shopping, in ideal terms. Shopping, services, recreation, office, and institutional facilities needed to support the community. I don't, institutional, why is that word in there?
Because I think in, we can take it out, but I think in the land, in the table of allowable uses, we have some medical stuff, and that may be where we pulled the word institutional from.
But doesn't that just be offices?
Could be.
You can just take institutional out.
Yeah, just go with offices.
The village center contains the shopping services, recreation, and offices needed to support the community?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Office facilities needed to support the community?
Yeah. Prevent commercial strip development by conce- by concentrating shopping within the village center. That's, doesn't make, that doesn't prevent strip development. So, I'd rather see that as, um, something like encouraging, kind of what we wrote previously about, basically having a business center that serves the needs of the residents. Do we even need that sentence? Because we just say up, up, up above, that the village center contains shopping, services, recreational, office facilities needed to support the community. And then it says it's intended to prevent, prevent commercial strip development. But why don't we just say it's intended to concentrate shopping within the village center?
That makes the whole lot more sense.
Okay. Concentrate shopping.
Well, and actually, that's pretty easy to do, because when this was first done, I think Pete May still had part of Pineland Preserve as VBD.
Yeah.
And then he came to us and changed that, so the only VBD we have is right in the center. We don't have it anywhere else.
Right, right.
Okay, it is intended to concentrate shopping.
Right.
Yep.
Promote an efficient pattern of land uses and provide goods and services needed by residents in a coordinated and concentrated manner.
That should be good.
Isn't that what we just?
That should be good.
So do we even need the first point? Cause the second point kinda says the same thing all over again, doesn't it?
How about let's take out the second point, cause I like the way the third one sounds better.
All right.
Okay, wait a minute. Let's just take. And then just take the last sentence and add it, basically, so basically, you're getting rid of the bullet points. You're gonna have two sentences that give you the definition of what it is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Two bullet, so concentrate shopping within the village center, and what's the next one?
Well, and then, and somehow work in promote an efficient pattern of land uses and provide goods and services needed by re- Okay, so you say, the village center contains shopping, services, recreational, and office facilities needed to support the community. It is intended to promote an efficient pattern of land uses and provide goods and services needed by residents in a coordinated and concentrated manner. Just make it a sent, make it a paragraph.
Yeah.
Right, okay, and, and forget the first one completely.
The first bullet point, yes.
Okay. So we wanna keep the second. Okay, and then, um, next definition is residential village planning elements. The L, this LUP uses three types of residential categories and incorporates zoning districts from the village ordinances. Overview of categories and zoning districts. Land use categories are defined in 4.2. I don't.
I don't see.
Oh, we have very low-density.
Very low-density, low-density, medium-density.
So we're saying, so why are we repeating? What are we doing here?
Because I think when we originally wrote this, the, the one we looked at, it was an example of, of somebody up north, um, had this part, I think had this part at the end, because they wanted to tie it to the map that showed, um, where those elements were found.
So why do we even have to, why do we even have to say land use categories are defined in 4 dot 2, when we're gonna list them again anyway?
Yep, take it out.
Yeah, just, just forget about that. And why is six, why are we changing it to 6.21? Oh, I guess that's when we're doing the definition. This is weird. See how it's.
You know what? Can't we just take that 6.2.1 out?
I would like to, yeah.
Take the whole thing out.
So now we go to very low-density.
Yep.
Which is basically RS-30 and 40. Well, it says generally includes the following zoning districts: equestrian, residential, rural estate, and limited residential lots, RS-30 and 40.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Why does it say limited residential lots?
I have no idea, and it needs to be RA-5.
Yeah, right.
Yep. Yeah, hang on.
RA-5. Well, we also have, um, yeah. Is 30 considered very low-density? Wouldn't that be low-density?
Hang on a second, I'll tell ya. Yeah, cause it's listed under low dens- density. You got RS-20, RS-30, and RS-40 under low dens- density, density.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So why is it?
And residential lots, yeah, I don't.
It's listed under very low and under low.
That's not.
No, that's not.
I would say a one-acre lot is not considered very low-density to me, but.
No, we pulled those definitions from someplace. We didn't make that up. Low-density says it ranges from one to two dwelling units per acre. So that's our RS-20, RS-30, and RS-40.
Right, so the very low shouldn't have 30 and 40 in it.
No, it shouldn't. They're generally, it's lot sizes for very low-density are five or more acres.
So that when, maybe what we should say is generally, the very low-density generally includes equestrian, residential, RA-5, rural estate, and lim- and we could say limited residential lots in excess of one acre.
I don't think it's that big a deal.
Or.
You've got RS-30 and RS-40 lots in the village. Some of them are two acres, three acres.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that's what we were thinking when we did it.
So just cut it off at rural estate?
Well, here's the thing. When you look at the definition. Sorry. Very low-density refers to densities of less than one dwelling per acre.
Right, so we should just leave it at the equestrian?
I think so.
RA-5 and RE.
Yeah.
And are there any other zoning districts?
Okay, very low-density, following zoning districts. We need to go RA-5, so you've got EU, yeah, RF-100. RF-200, rather.
Well, we, we really only have one of those, correct?
You've got three properties. You have three, you have three distinct lots that are RF-200.
Where?
Off of Candlewood, back off of North Shamrock, yep.
Oh, yeah, how big are they?
Ten acres apiece.
Okay.
So you'd have RE. Okay, EU, RA-5, RE, and RF-200.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's rural format, right?
Yep, yep, and you leave.
I, I think we take the limited residential out of there, because we're moving on to the definition of low-density.
Yeah, it's not that big a deal. I think when this was written, what we were thinking was, that's why it says limited residential lots, because you have limited lots in the village that are greater than one acre that are RS-30 and RS-40, which got RS-20 too. I mean, the, the property that Angie McQ has, that's RS-20, that's like ten eight, ten, fifteen acres.
Right, right.
Okay, so we'll take that out.
Then we have low-density, which includes the resident, our residential lots of 20, 30, and 40.
Why is it saying?
I don't know why it says Foxfire Village after that.
Called a typo.
Medium-density includes primarily residential multifamily, a combination of duplexes, quadruplexes, townhomes, or condominiums. What we, do we have townhomes?
Hmm, no. I don't think so. Do we have condos?
The duplexes are considered condos though.
Well, I know we have condominiums, but I don't know if we have townhomes. I guess we could have townhomes.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, yeah.
I mean, if, if something burned and they wanna build something new, they could do that. Or they wanted.
And you know, that sentence in there about condominium development designated for planned unit development, you'd pretty much, I mean, I don't know why that's there.
Right, cause it, it says townhomes and condominiums, so.
Yeah, and the zoning ordinance would make you have a pub anyway.
Right.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we'll just end that sentence at townhomes or condominiums. So I guess, yeah, what we're describing is medium-density. These are the type of residential units we would be expecting. Recreation facilities and greenways. Recreation facilities, the definition includes parks, golf courses, swimming pool, and other sports facilities. Um, recreation facilities, the definition includes parks, golf courses, swimming pool, and other sports facilities. Do we wanna specifically, okay, um, put in pickleball? Probably not, 'cause we're just, these are just definitions, and then...
Yeah, others.
Greenways are linear, relatively undisturbed natural areas that meander in and around built areas within the village community.
The trails.
Now, it's, yes, the only built improvements in a greenway are pedestrian or horse trails. And then Foxfire land use plan, I don't know what that means, but get that out of there.
Means the keyboard is out of there.
Okay, now we know what greenways are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, moving on to chapter seven. Explanation of key features on the map. Key features of the map. The LUP map is built using the type of lands and elements that were described in chapters four and six. The map indicates where the various land use elements are to be located. Boundaries between land uses are generally transitional. The LUP map is taken from key areas on the village zoning map. Do we have an LUP map?
Well, I know when I did it, way, way, way back, I cut and pasted...
I mean, is that what is considered the LUP map?
No, because...
That's the zoning map.
Yeah, there was an LUP map that was done, because in it, what we did was we indicated medium density, very low density. That's, that's what you used it for. I don't know, you know, let me just, can I check and see if we even need to have an LUP map? Because really, if you looked at the zoning map, it tells you what you're gonna have.
Right.
You know what I mean? I think the LUP was designed to give an overview of what was designated very low density, low density, and medium density.
Well, why don't we skip the map section then? And we'll just see if we need one.
Yeah.
May- maybe Lisa, we need to talk to Lisa on that. So let's just skip this for now.
Go to eight?
Yeah. I had some questions in the seventh. Okay, so we don't have to deal with that. Chapter eight, recommendation for future action. This LUP provides a clear vision for future village growth and development. It describes where various boundaries, types of, I'm sorry. It describes where various types of future land uses and development should be located, and provides a clear guidance as to the form, characteristics, and appearances, in appearance, that are desired for future development. The vision embodied by the LUP is the first step in making that vision a reality. This chapter lists, this chapter lists specific steps recommended to ensure plan implementation. These recommendations were developed jointly with a citizens advisory committee and the planning and zoning board. I think we should just strike this sentence. Well, planning and zoning did, did this.
Yeah, yeah, we just take the CAC out.
Take out what?
The CAC.
Yeah.
Yep.
Were developed...
With...
With the planning and boni- with the zoning board. The recommended actions require commitment on the part of the village and its residents. The LUP should be reviewed every four years.
It says, how often do we...
Is this three?
We have a, how long, but it says it's done in conjunction with the annual review of the long range plan. How many years does a long range plan cover?
Five.
Four.
Four, it's four.
No.
I thought it was five, but it's four.
This one is.
I think the one before it was two. Because that's, 'cause I questioned that, I said, I thought it was five years, and I said, well, the previous one was four.
So then it would make sense that the land use plan would get reviewed after you get the long range plan.
Right after, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll change it to four.
Well, in that case, we really do have a citizens advisory commission, because they're, they, they have input to...
They have input to the long range plan.
Right.
Not to the LUP.
Okay, you're right, yeah. Well, the LUP should be reviewed...
But remember, the LUP only looks at land use.
Yeah, you're right, right.
It's very limited, only, it is not, the long range plan is expansive, the LUP is very targeted.
Right. So the, it should be reviewed every four years.
Four, I got it, yep.
In conjunction with the annual review of the long range plan.
Yep.
This will enable village officials to staff and to track progress of implementation. While taking the pulse of the community and to determine whether the LUP goals are still appropriate, and if additional goals should be added. LUP recommendations follow. They are not listed in order of priority. I do not have, I don't have the long range, the LUP...
Recommendations? What do you not have?
Well, from the, from the long, from the long range plan.
But these are LUP recommendations.
Right. So, recommendation, recommended actions essential for initial LUP implementation. Feasibility study in planning for community beautification, including village entrances, mediums, and signage.
That's not really...
Identify municipal land use needs for long-term future development and a plan for land preservation or acquisition as appropriate.
So you added development?
Huh?
You added the word development?
No, it's in there.
No, it says, and development for the...
And develop a plan for preservation or acquisition as appropriate.
Okay, so... I wonder how much of this is in there?
Well, this part of, I had a, and like the next one, identify any natural resources potentially requiring protection or remediation.
Such as?
I guess if we found some endangered species in the park somewhere.
Oh, the red badger woodpecker.
Or a graveyard somewhere.
Yeah, well, it's not the red badger woodpeckers. The red badger woodpecker.
Yeah.
You know, the two, the things in that list that would be the most important to me would be, um, use this plan to guide all zoning development and annexation decisions, and take actions that are compatible, ensure that all future land development is conducted in compliance, encourage liaison relationships with other municipality and county partners, and, um, I mean, those, four, five, and six for sure.
Right, the first two, the first three are really a part of the long range plan.
Yep.
Because, I mean...
Because, because the land use plan doesn't, it doesn't develop anything.
Right, it's a plan, it's, it's a...
It's a recommending plan.
Right. I, those are really part of the, those first two are the first three.
Right, so get rid of the three?
Get rid of one, two, and three. Well, let's, let me see, no, you leave them as bullet points.
Right, and I like four, five, and six, and develop mid-range, long-range maintenance programs for roads, recreations, and amenities. I, I don't know why that's in there. 'Cause that's part of the long range.
No, because the LUP doesn't do that.
Right, that's part of the, long range plan.
Should be four, five, and six that we keep.
I, I agree.
Alright.
Actually, I think that number three, we should put that somewhere. And it's more, not that we want to identify it, but if it's, if it's found, we need to...
Preserve it.
Preserve, yeah, like, if, if...
Why don't we just, why don't we just say preserve?
What, does faith preserve any natural resources?
Yes.
Yeah, yep, okay, so...
Well, this is recommended actions essential for initial LUP implementation.
Initial should be out of there too.
Right.
Yeah.
But three is something we should put somewhere in our...
Well, we have natural resources.
Well, we have object, in, in section, preserve environmental resources in chapter three.
What chap- chapter three?
Chapter three.
Oh, yeah, but it's also in the chapter one.
Well, so we were a little repetitive.
Yeah.
Come on, give it a break.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at chapter one...
We need to put that somewhere, but, um...
Why don't we take it?
Oh, where it says preserve environmental resources.
You're chapter three?
In chapter one.
One.
In the very beginning, it says preserve environmental resources, maybe we should say...
And identify any natural resources potentially requiring protection?
Yes.
Yes.
Or, yes.
So take it out of the last page.
Take it out, take it out of here. Movement.
Oh, hang on, I'm cutting paste, hold on. Okay, take three, where am I taking three and putting it?
And putting it in chapter one.
Okay.
Dot three, um, point, point number three, preserve environmental resources.
Yep.
And just expand.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Requiring protection, does take a long time to write that.
I abbreviated.
Okay.
So we end up with three goals. Use the plan to guide all zoning development and annexation, ensure that all future development is conducted in compliance, encourage liaison relationships with other municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Yep. And I have to tell you, we, we've started this mayor and manager meeting month, kind of monthly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, actually, I think it's quarterly, but anyway, that's fallen really great.
That's really good.
It's really nice to get to know all of the mayors and village administrators.
You should probably give us an update on that at the next council meeting.
Um, I actually should have added something else to the agenda, but I'll, um, hand it out. They, they wanted to send a letter to McGinnis and Jackson, all of our representatives, Salz and Ben Moss, for all the representatives for the county, um, a letter regarding our opposition to elimination of the ETJ.
Yeah.
And they also wanted to send a copy of this same letter to the county commissioners. So, and, but yet, in all signing it, we have to agree, obviously, as a council.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, it may be at our next council meeting that we discuss that, but, um, it's, it's really very good to, I think we do have more power in numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So we're gonna hold off on the P and Z until...
Yeah. Yeah, I think what I'd like to do, 'cause you know, one thing that, that did come up in that mayor's meeting is that a lot of people are looking at their UDO and going through it with all the law changes and everything, which is this.
The big book.
The big book, they're going through it and redoing it. Aberdeen is, Pinehurst is, Cameron is, there's a lot of towns that are going through their codes of ordinances, and I know we've got a bunch of zoning changes that have been recommended. But, you know, I'm thinking, this is at least, was originally written, what, four, four years ago? That what I'd like to do is maybe go through it, or maybe we can all pick sections or all go through it, and maybe throw some things to planning and zoning to say, you know, instead of going through these zoning changes and then changing our UDO, 'cause that's, it's a lot of money to update our, our UDO, and there could be things in here that aren't relevant anymore, UDO done.
The only thing we gotta watch though is that planning and zoning has sent us some things that came through residents, and the residents have asked, will you look at this? And when it takes us a year to decide to look at their stuff, I don't think that's good.
Well, I haven't, I, I, you know what, maybe they should come separately? I don't know what the, what the big ones are. Um, there's a few things in here that they did recommend, that I am not, I'm not real. See, I think the other thing too, that I wanna make sure when we go through these planning and zoning recommendations, I'm myself, when I read this, I say, are we lowering the bar? Are we raising the bar for Foxfire Village? Are we keeping things the same and just changing some nuances? But when I see things that, in my mind, are lowering the bar, whether it's aesthetically or requirement wise, I don't think we should allow it.
And that's fine, all I'm saying is, if we don't wanna consider all the recommendations, that's fine. But there are some in there that we've had for two or three months, and I think as a council, we're obligated to say something.
Well, do we wanna, do you know which ones they are?
Well, the one that came in with the basketball hoop, we've had that for a while. I mean, that first set that we got, the second set where we've got, um, the barn condominiums and stuff like that, that's a little, that's a little deeper kinda thing, and that, that was just somebody said, hey, do you allow these? The person who came with the basketball hoop, and I, there are cou- I can't remember if there's another thing that goes along with it, but came specifically to say, would you consider this? And so as a council, I think we need to consider and say yes or no.
Well, I can, I can consider that tonight if you'd like. Or do we wanna do it in...
Well, it has to go to public hearing.
Only if we want it to. We can shoot it down right now.
Yep.
We don't have to go to a public hearing on it. We can say, no, we don't wanna do it.
We don't wanna pursue the recommendation.
Right, right.
I agree.
I think to consider it tonight, seeing as how we said we weren't gonna go into them, they're shooting from the hip. A little bit.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I just moved it to the, to the end, I didn't remove it from our agenda, I, I moved them to the end.
Okay. I was gonna ask Tasha for the presentation that the lady did, who wants the basketball hoops, 'cause she made a good, Tasha said she did a really nice presentation. I, I guess here's my only point, when we get stuff from planning and zoning, we need to do something with it, whether it's, we send it back and say, hey, we'll consider this at a different time, or we say, hey, we're not gonna move forward on this one, or we do a public hearing. Because some of them, for example, like recommending a chicken coop as an additional accessory to structure, I mean, that kinda makes sense to me.
Well, it doesn't, well, then you should, I would prefer, because they can have other animals than chickens. So I would prefer, instead of calling it a chicken coop, I would just say an animal shelter or something. Because if they have rabbits, then you have to have a bunny hutch.
Right.
Or you have to have, you know, a whatever animal, you know, a duck pen, you know, I don't know, but I think that's getting a little...
You don't wanna drill it in.
I think, I think we should just put animal shelter.
Exactly.
And then whatever animals they have, 'cause you can't, you're not gonna put rabbits in a chicken coop, so...
Rabbits.
A rabbit hutch.
Right, so if we just put animal shelter, 'cause you have run-in sheds, which is a horse shelter. So, that would be something that I would, um... So anyway, I don't know which, and maybe To- you know, Tasha's not here tonight, but I don't know which ones of these are specific to... You know, and the basketball hoop, you know, the thing that I worry about, just so people could, do, do we wanna discuss this or not?
I have a, I, can I make a suggestion? I think we should have Tasha here when we discuss them.
Yeah.
Can we maybe plan a special work session to just drill down on the planning and zoning recommendations?
We could.
So that we just focus on planning and zoning stuff that night, and we kinda figure out what we wanna move forward with, go to a public hearing with?
We could, so, when do we wanna have a special meet, work session?
October.
October's not good for me, I was gonna say, I'm...
Well, then we're back to our normal work session just about.
Yep, well, I won't be here for that one. Sorry. Well, we could do though, I mean, if, oh, yes, I will, sorry, I take that back. We could do a special work session in November, early, because we don't generally do a work session in November, 'cause it falls on Thanksgiving, right?
Correct.
Maybe we do a special in November and just focus on planning and zoning.
You know what, I could do the thirty first, that's okay, October.
That's the trunk and treat. It's most likely.
And that's our regular work session anyway.
Correct.
Or maybe we just take the next work session and we focus on planning and zoning. But we really can't do that, because...
No, because I think we've got a lot of stuff coming up in work sessions, um, that we need, we're gonna need to... we need, we're going to need to...
Water.
Work on, yes.
Yep.
I think we need a special, why don't, why don't, I will have Lisa find out when Tasha is available.
She's not supposed to be here, but, um...
And then we'll have to schedule...
It doesn't necessarily have to be on a Thursday if we do a special either.
No, it can be at any time.
Nor does it need to be at 4:30.
That's true.
Yeah, so we got a little flexibility.
And again, I think one of the most important things in this land use plan, and I'll say it again, and I really think we should maybe make it bold or whatever, but...
Uh, my name is spelled incorrectly on this thing, too, please. Geez, come on, people. Well, that's no big deal, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, Newman. Ow, hello, Newman. Can you please correct that, thank you. I just lost that. So what did you want to say?
I know, I'm trying to find the, um... The exact sentence, and I think it is right here. A very strong focus on rural residential design.
Where are you?
That's, it's on the, it's in page one, one dot one, background.
Okay.
It's like the first, second, third, the fourth paragraph.
Yeah.
Meetings with citizens revealed that more than anything else, Foxfire Village residents care about the appearance, design, and form of their community. The LUP provides guidance, clearly defining the vision for future development. I think...
That's what it needs to do.
Right, and I think it's very important that residents move here because they care about the appearance. They don't, you know, and a lot of people want to change the appearance.
Right.
And it's generally the minority of people that, that want to change the appearance, and if they are changing the appearance, are they making it better or worse? And I think if we are changing it...
It made it even better.
We should be making it for the better, we shouldn't be loosening standards and...
No standards at all.
Right, right, because it's, it's a slow, it's a slow slide.
Slow downhill slide.
Right, right.
Shouldn't go the other way.
I agree. I mean, that's the only way you preserve property value and, and make your town a great place to live. So, all right, let's find out when Tasha's available for a special work session.
Okay.
And all council members can be present. And I believe that that ends this meeting.
Well, no, you have to do public comments.
Well, no, I know that, I meant, I'm...
Yeah, we're good.
We're done for now, so we will table public, I mean, P and Z recommendations. All right, moving on to public comments for items listed on the agenda only. No public comments? No? Okay, well...
Would you make a motion?
Oh, to adjourn.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?